Always nice to be live and in person. Before we call the meeting to order, let me run down the agenda so everybody knows there will be a couple of breaks where you can escape. Obviously, we'll call the meeting to order, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance. First on tap is a resolution that we'll take care of, then we'll have a break after the resolution. Three public hearings, one at 7:30, one at 7:45, and one at 8 o'clock, and those are all in National Grid. And then we'll continue on with our regular meeting. We do have to break this committee work later in the evening. Sound good? Did I miss anything?
No.
Kim in the booth, we're ready to go. Thank you, sir. Call to order this regular meeting of the Beverly City Council, Monday, November 22, 2021. Ms. Kent, could you please call the roll?
Ames, here. Feldman, here. Flaherty, Flowers, here. Housman?
Here.
Rand?
Here.
Rotundo?
Yeah.
Saint-Hilaire?
Here.
And Guonce.
I am here. Councilor Rotundo, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance. [inaudible] [inaudible] [inaudible]
Thank you. Councilor Flowers, you might want to move that in January.
It's normally over there.
It makes you look very patriotic.
[laughing] Thank you.
[inaudible]
And we will start the evening with Councilor Flowers.
Thank you. Do you want me to go to the podium?
Please.
Thank you.
Now, welcome, members of the school committee and city councilors-elect, and welcome Matt Saint-Hilaire.
So I also wanted to just take a moment, I think it would be hard if you didn't have a student at Hannah to pick them all out, but just to also thank the Hannah School faculty who are also here with us today, so that we have the opportunity to honor one of our principals, one of our Beverly Elementary School principals, Gabrielle Montivecki, and also members of Gabrielle's family who are here, and so just thank them for being here. I wanted to ask, you know, there are a bunch of Hannah kids, former and current, so if you want to come on up and stand with me, you can, and anybody who's reading with me, too. Thank you.
Councilor Flowers, who's this guy here in the red shirt?
[laughing]
Hey, it's Emmett. How are you, bud?
So this representation of Hannah friends are students, current and former, and they, along with their parents and many other members of our community, including Dr. Chirocek, Mayor Cahill, members of our school committee, were all part of nominating Gabrielle Montivecki for a Salem State University Educators Hall of Fame Award, which she was selected for and was inducted into the Salem State University Hall of Fame last week, and so we're here today to present her with this joint resolution on behalf of the city council, the mayor, and the wider Beverly community. And so I am very grateful to my friends who are willing to help me read. This is a joint resolution celebrating Hannah School Principal Gabrielle Montivecki's induction into Salem State University's Northeast Regional Educators Hall of Fame. Whereas Gabrielle Montivecki has been principal of Beverly's Hannah Elementary School for the past seven years, from July of 2014 until now, and was already an accomplished, warm, caring, and outstanding educator before she arrived in Beverly, beginning her career as an educator as a first-grade teacher and then kindergarten teacher in Lynn, followed by her work teaching kindergarten and then serving as a school administrator in Salem, and... Whereas Mrs. Montivecki was nominated in the spring of 2021 by the Hannah School PTO and Hannah School community and students, as well as by members of the wider Beverly community, including her peers and faculty in the Beverly Public Schools, as well as community members, former education students who were placed at Hannah School, members of our Beverly School Committee, Mayor Michael Cahill, and superintendent of schools, Dr. Suzanne Chirocek, for the Salem State Alumni Award within the Northeast Regional Educators Hall of Fame, and... Whereas nominators said of Ms. Montivecki, "Ms. Montivecki has that innate gift that makes her not only someone who is clearly incredibly talented and gifted for the work of education, she loves her students, she knows her students and her families well, each child's story matters deeply to her, she's accessible, often giving of herself and her time to attend countless after-school and weekend community events, just to ensure that her students and families have those connections with her and can see and feel that she is a part of the community, and that our lives and our time and our experiences matter deeply to her, because they matter to us, the children and parents of the school community, and..." Nominators further said, "A good leader is one who not only meets people where they are at, welcomes and supports them, but also encourages and challenges them to dream and grow beyond what they thought was even possible. Gabrielle encompasses both of those traits. She takes the motto of Hannah Elementary, 'Be kind, be responsible, be the best you can be, the choice is yours,' and creates an environment where every single student, staff, and family member can grow to truly become the best they can be. Gabrielle has forever changed my life, and I am incredibly grateful for her strong, wise, caring, and inspiring leadership, and..." Hannah Elementary student nominator wrote this about Gabrielle, "I think my principal, Ms. Montivecki, she won the award for Outstanding Educator. Some reasons are that she is nice, she is kind, and she is helpful. She also cares about what is important to kids, she's energetic, she also makes every kid feel important, and..." Whereas her peers and district leadership acknowledged the varied roles Gabrielle plays in our community, as one of her peers captured well, writing, "In her work with the Human Rights Committee in Beverly, I have marveled at the way that Gabrielle has woven her work as a leader in the schools into much broader goals across the city. Her work knows no bounds, and I have been delighted to be with her in meetings with colleagues, students, or families in schools, restaurants, or community spaces. Gabrielle champions others, whomever they are, wherever they are, and..." Gabrielle is a triple Viking at Salem State University, earning her Bachelor of Education in Elementary Education in 1999, her Master's of Education in Special Education in 2007, and her CAGS in Educational Leadership in 2013, and...
Gabrielle is supported by her wonderful family, her husband, myself, [laughing] and their two children, Lil and Josie, as well as their boss and terrier, Piper, and...
Whereas the city of Beverly places a high priority on outstanding, caring, compassionate education of the whole child, with robust attention to social and emotional learning and supports, respect for children for the unique people they are, and with attention to culturally responsive teaching and creative ways to engage students, families, and staff alike, as lifelong learners, all of which are skills and passion that Mrs. Montivecki brings to her work every single day. Therefore, be it resolved that we, members of the Beverly City Council and Mayor Michael P. Cahill, and I think it's fair to say the whole Beverly community, do hereby honor and congratulate Gabrielle Montivecki, following her induction into the Salem State University Northeast Regional Educators Hall of Fame, and her receipt of the Salem State University School of Education Alumni Award, and thank her for her outstanding service in and to our community and with the children of our community, and that the city clerks spread a copy of this resolution upon the city records. [applause] Is it okay if I say something? Just really? Oh, my gosh. I am just like completely overwhelmed all the way around, 100%. Thank you so much to every single person in this room who has just been a mentor to me, especially the young people who are right here, who are always mentoring me. Hannah is a super, super, super special community. I inherited that beautiful, special community, and it's just my hope every day that I can keep that lively energy up. Every single teacher who is in this room is an amazing part of that. We've been together on quite a journey. You guys are, you guys all know, we've been together on quite a journey, lifting each other up in a lot of positive ways, and I'm so grateful for the mentorship of Dr. Flaherty and Dr. Chirocek, and every single person in the community, and I'm overwhelmed for the recognition, and I just want to keep working hard. We're just right in the middle of all this wonderful, hard work together, and thank you to everybody for letting me be a part of this and for your kind, kind, just thoughtfulness of even recognizing me for the Salem State Alumni Award. I'm deeply, deeply touched. Thank you so much. Thank you. [applause]
I would entertain a motion to take a five-minute recess.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Before I call for motion, I would entertain a motion to wholeheartedly approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero, and how about a five-minute recess? First, second?
Yeah.
In favor, aye. Opposed, motion carries eight to zero. Take a few minutes. Thank you.
Sorry. [laughing]
Who's on finance? And this cell? All right. Well, we don't meet in committee, we haven't met in committee in a year and a half.
Been a while.
Right. I'll let that people know that. How's that? Good, really?
Okay, we do have three public hearings scheduled for... Oh. Kim, we're good. You're so gracious.
I would ent... Let's move on and approve some minutes.
Okay.
I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of our meetings that were held on November 8, 2021. It was a regular city council meeting, and then June 14, 2021, it was a special budget meeting, Finance Committee, Committee of the Whole.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero. Thank you. Minutes are approved. Now, I have to make sure I have all the right agendas. And on my watch, it is 7:30, so let's move on to our first public hearing. Call to order, our public hearing on order number 197. Ms. Kent, could you read that?
Order number 197, order that the city council, the city of Beverly, hold a public hearing on Monday, November 22, 2021, at 7:30 PM at City Hall, 191 Cabot Street, Beverly, relative to the petition from Mass Electric DBA National Grid for Plan 29496263 regarding ShoreTel AB, and this was published in the newspaper on November 12.
And Sabitia is here from National Grid. Nice to see you. Please let us know what you would like to do on ShoreTel AB.
Sabitama Haber, representing National Grid, 44 River Street, Beverly, Massachusetts. This is a new property going in or a new building going in at this location, and we're providing service. We have to move a poll. It's in the way.
Thank you. Councilor Rotundo, it's in Ward 1. Do you have any issues?
No issues, just a question. Do you have a timeframe on it? It is a poll that's been questioned by the neighbors, concerns of the safety of it, because that project's really been challenging for the neighbors. Do you have a timeline of when you're thinking of moving it up the hill, I believe it's going?
Once this clears, if all pertinent finances have been settled, then it will move forward probably around four to six weeks.
Thank you. Just because, like I said, the neighbors are concerned, and that's something I just want to get back to them, so I appreciate that. Thank you. That was it.
Thank you, Councilor Rotundo. Anybody else? Is there anybody here from the public that would like to make a comment on this? Hearing, no further questions or comments. I will close our public hearing. Can I ask for motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero. Now, I'm sorry, I did leave a little time in between public hearings because I was worried that we might have gotten off track because of other National Grid projects in the city, but it looks like we're going to stay focused, so I'm going to go back to our regular agenda, okay? Thank you. Ms. Kent, let's go to communications from his honor, the mayor.
Order number 207, Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby appoint, subject to your review and recommendation, Mr. John J. Leahy, Ninefield Stone Lane, Beverly, to serve on the Beverly Historic District Commission. His term will be effective until April 1, 2024. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
That is a great appointment, and we will refer to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number 208, Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has received a $5,000 donation from Beverly resident Peter Coleman. The gift is intended to benefit the senior center and has no restrictions. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant earmarked donation or gifts to the city can be expended for their prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this donation by taking action on this matter at your upcoming meeting on November 22. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Please refer to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order number 209, Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the city of Beverly has been awarded a $33,000 recycling dividends program grant through the Sustainability Sustainable Materials Recovery Program from the Mass Department of Environmental Protection Bureau of Air and Waste. This grant will allow the city to continue to implement eco-friendly policies that maximize recycling composing and waste reduction programs. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both city council and mayor approval before any grant or gifts to the city can be expended for the prescribed purpose. I therefore request the city council approve this grant by taking action on this matter at the upcoming meeting on November 22. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order number 210, Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby appoint, subject to your review and recommendation, Mr. Hensley Elsie, 7 Blake Street, Hyde Park, Mass, to serve as constable in the city of Beverly for the express purpose of serving civil process. Attached is Mr. Elsie's application, which has been approved by Police Chief John L. Thatcher. Mr. Elsie's term will be effective from December 6, 2021 until December 6, 2024. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order number 211, Dear Honorable City Council, I respectfully request that you approve a budget transfer of $205,547 into the fire department budget to fund costs associated with the recently agreed-upon memorandum of agreement between the city of Beverly and the firefighters' union. The terms of the award cover the periods FY 2022 through FY 2024. As such, the requested transfer will be allotted to pay retroactive pay adjustments back to the start of fiscal year '22, as well as the adjustment costs for this coming July 31, 2022. With the approval of the city council, $205,547 will be transferred from the Reserve for Union Negotiations 11324/57810. There are sufficient funds available within this reserve account to support this transfer. I am attaching, per your view, the agreed-upon MOA. Please initiate action on this matter at your next city council meeting scheduled for Monday, November 22. This transfer request will require a public hearing to be set, held prior to the council vote. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property, and we will set a public hearing this evening for December 6. Correct? Isn't this much more fun and live and in person? I know, Councilor Rotundo, you can't wear shorts, although maybe.
Second.
In favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight to zero.
Order Number 224. Dear Honorable City Council, I am pleased to inform you that the City of Beverly has received a donation of 10 turkeys from the U.S. Pavement. These will be distributed to veterans in need for the upcoming Thanksgiving Day holiday. Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, requires both City Council and Mayor approval before any grant. Airmark donation or gifts to the city can be expended for the prescribed purpose. I therefore request the City Council approve this donation by taking action on this matter at your upcoming meeting on November 22nd, 2021. Thank you. Sincerely yours, Michael P. Cahill, Mayor.
And please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property. Now, let's go to communications from other city offices and boards.
Order...
Sure.
Order Number 212. Dear Honorable City Council, I hereby appoint, subject to your review and recommendation, Karen H. Fogarty of 169 East Lothup Street, as the City Council appointee to the Financial Forecast Committee. Her term to be effective until December 31st, 2023. Respectfully submitted, Paul Guance, Council President.
Please refer to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order Number 213. Do you want me to read your letter? Order Number 213, related for a letter from Council Flowers regarding the flooding in Ward 3 neighborhoods.
Please... Do you want to read it, Council Flowers?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Dear Honorable Council colleagues, over my time in office, I have had the occasion to hear from numerous residents across several wards about severe flooding in their neighborhoods. Most recently, I was encouraged by Ward 3 Councilor Stacy Ames, who has been working on this issue with residents in her ward, to visit Jordan Street in that ward to see impacted residents' homes and to hear their stories. State Senator Joan Lovely and Ward 3 Councilor-elect Steve Crowley have also been able to hear from these residents and to hear their experiences with flooding in their area. I understand that Mayor Cahill's team and specifically Commissioner of Public Services Mike Collins have also been out visiting and working in and with some of these areas and with impacted residents. To that end, I believe that what might best help to facilitate public process and public participation would be for our Public Services Subcommittee to schedule a public meeting to bring together all of these stakeholders so that we can hear and learn from residents' experiences and work together as city leaders and staff to determine how we can collectively best serve these residents. I'm requesting that this public letter serve to help open our public conversation on this matter, and I look forward to further conversation and working together to best serve the public on this issue. Sincerely, Julie Flowers, Councilor-at-Large.
Counselor Ames, anything to add before we refer that to committee?
No, just that I'm appreciative of Counselor Flowers' work on this issue, and I think that this could be a great thing to have everyone come together and discuss this issue in detail and potentially start to work towards some solutions.
Thank you, Counselor. Please refer that to the Committee on Public Services.
Order Number 214, from Finance Director Brian Ailes, for approval to pay prior-year invoices totaling $5,851.38 from the FY 2022 funds.
Please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property.
Order Number 215, from Sergeant Hennaberry. Dear Council members, this request is to amend the current city ordinance 270-49 by adding a handicap parking sign at 9 Fosse Terrace. This location will be added to the current city ordinance 270-49, off-street handicap parking. I have conducted a site visit and have not observed any issues that would result in a conflict to public safety or traffic. I would support the placement of a handicap parking sign in this location. Very respectfully, Sergeant Michael R. Hennaberry.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order Number 216, from Chief Assessor Peter Karen. Dear Honorable City Council, the Beverly Board of Assessors respectfully request that the Council schedule a public hearing on December 6, 2021, relative to the allegation of fiscal year 2022 tax levy percentages among the four classes of real and personal property in consideration of the adoption of open space residential and small business exemptions. Thank you very truly yours, Peter Karen, Chief Assessor.
And please refer that to the Committee on Finance and Property. We'll set a public hearing this evening.
Order Number 217, from the City Clerk, and is 2022 renewals of Class 1, 2, and 3 motor vehicle licenses.
Please refer to the Committee on Legal Affairs.
Order 218, from the City Clerk, and this is for renewals for 2022 of amusement licenses.
And please refer that to the Committee on Legal Affairs. I really enjoy not having to read Rule Number 22 either. Oh, I don't mind roll call, because I like saying roll call. Communications, applications, and petitions.
Order Number 219, relating to the Department of Environmental Protection Waterways Regulation Program, this notice of application for waterway license.
I would entertain a motion to receive that and place it on file.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight to zero.
Order Number 220, relating to Alan Taubert, from Executive Director of Salem and Beverly Water Supply Board, for the annual water supply.
I would entertain a motion to receive that and place it on file.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries eight to zero.
Order 221, from Chair Ellen Hutchinson on the Planning Board. Annual update of inclusionary housing submission requirements, procedures, and supplemental regulations.
I would entertain a motion to receive that and place it on file.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries nine to zero.
Order Number 222, from Perick. Beverly Retirement Board FY 2023 appropriation.
I would entertain a motion to receive that and place it on file.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine to... Eight to zero. That's all we have there. Let's go to unfinished business from a previous meeting.
Order Number 195. Be as obtained, the City Council of the City of Beverly as follows. Ordered in the year 2020, proposed order... 21, I think it should be. Proposed order amending Beverly ordinance 69-4 vacations by replacing paragraph G with the following language. G, in order to address a vacation leave issue arises from the COVID-19 pandemic notwithstanding paragraph F. One, the December 31st, 2021 deadline for carrying over shall be extended to April 30th, 2022. And two, employees should be allowed to carry over up to 12 vacation days through the remaining months of calendar year 2022. This provision is applicable only to vacation carryover from calendar year 2021. And this was published in the Salem News on November 12th, 2021, and this is the final passage.
Any questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the ordinance. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries eight to zero. Thank you. Let's go back to our eight... 7:45 public hearing. Ms. Kent, could you please read that? Order 198.
Order Number 198. Order that the City Council of the City of Beverly hold a public hearing on Monday, November 22nd, in 2021, at 7:45 PM at City Hall, 191 Cabot Street, Beverly, relative to the petition from Mass Electric Company DBA National Grid for Plan 30397864 regarding Bow Street and Rentool Street. And this was published in the newspaper on November 12th, 2021.
Sabithia, you are here for this one also. Bow Street and Rentool.
Yes. Sabita Mahabair, representing National Grid, 44 River Street, Beverly, Massachusetts. This is to provide an upgraded service to the property at 232 Rentool.
Thank you. Counselor Rand, Ward 2. Any questions or comments?
Do have questions. Thank you.
Great.
I noticed that the conduit says it's going to be... That's going to be installed as 1 to 4 inches. Can you just tell me more about the...
It's one. Quantity of one, and it's 4 inches in diameter.
Ah, got it. Okay. I thought that was a range, and that confused me. Okay. And then also, can you tell me more about the need for a new hand hole?
Presently, it goes straight into the building, and typically, we have point of demarcation between their wires and ours.
Okay, so the way it's installed now is not kind of up to code?
Not today's code, no.
Okay, got it. And then, is this... One last question on this one. So this is just... It's an upgrade. So you're doing this in the new style where you have... I'm learning a lot about conduit lately. So this is in the new style where you have concrete surrounding the wire as opposed to like it just being in the ground and having this... Does this type of... Does the old conduit have that... The liquid surrounding it as well? The liquid insulation or no? Is that only with really large cables?
Liquid insulation. You mean oil-filled?
Yeah.
This wouldn't be oil-filled.
Does not?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
All good?
All good.
Thank you, Counselor Rand. Great questions. Any other members of the City Council have any questions or comments? And any members of the public? Hearing no further questions or comments. I will close our public hearing and entertain a motion to approve the request.
So moved. Second.
In favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight to zero. Okay, we have one more scheduled for 8 o'clock, and I think that it's a good time for us to... I would entertain a motion to take a break for some committee work.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries eight to zero. Legal Affairs will meet in Committee Room A. Finance and Property will stay right here. And Public Services does not have to meet this evening. Thank you. Counselor Rand, why don't you... Counselor Flaherty is not here. He's the Chair of Finance and Property, so why don't you chair this evening?
Okay, order number 208 for the donations of $5,000 from Peter Coleman for the senior center. Any questions?
I would make a motion. No, no questions. I'd make a motion to approve.
Okay. Oh, I make the motion?
You make the motion. I say so moved.
You so move it.
All right. I'm your boss.
Okay, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion passes. And then you want this back just like that?
Yep.
Okay. Do you need me to fill it out?
Nope.
Okay. That's awesome. Okay, order number 209 with... Let's see, this is a grant for $33,000 for the recycling dividends program through Sustainable... Sustainability Materials Recovery Program from the Mass Department of Environmental Protections Bureau of Air and Waste. Any questions? I have a question.
You do. She's not here, though.
She just went into her office.
Oh, okay. That's okay. Anyone here? No? Mr. Ailes, do you know anything about that?
If that's a question you're asking.
It's okay. I'll follow up. I'm curious what we did well to receive this, because usually there's... I think this is the one where you have these little... Almost like checkpoints, and I'm wondering, you know, what we got. But I can easily follow up with her. Offline, as they say. What's that? Oh, call to order Committee of the Whole. Thank you. So I would accept a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I'll follow up with our grants director on that. Order Number 211. And this is the request for a budget transfer of $205,477 to the Fire Department budget to fund costs associated with the recently agreed MOA between City... The City of Beverly and the Firefighters Union. So we just need to set a public hearing for this for December 6th at?
7:15.
7:15. I would accept a motion to set a public hearing for December 6th at 7:15. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. And we have the... Okay. We have the late file, order number 224. And this is for... To receive a donation of 10 turkeys from U.S. Pavement for veterans in need on Thanksgiving Day. I would accept a motion to approve. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay. Order Number 212. Okay. And this is a reappointment. This is from Council President. Reappointment of Karen Fogarty to the Financial Forecast Committee. I would accept a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And they would like to get started right away, so that's great.
That is great. And she is a wonderful addition to that committee. I've served on it with her, and I am a better counselor for it.
Good to have her back.
Yeah, agreed. Thank you. And this is order number 214, and this would be an approval to pay prior-year invoices. I think it was seven. Seven invoices. And Mr. Ailes is here with us. Did you want to just talk a little bit about these invoices or...
I can have a few specific questions about particulars, but just note that this is a process that we undertake. Anytime a fiscal year closes, if there's spillover invoices that department heads receive... Remember, we have a decentralized accounts payable process where every department pays their own invoices. So by law, they cannot pay an invoice from a prior fiscal year, even though they have an appropriation that's been given to them without specific approval from the City Council to do so. So this is just note, asking for that specific approval.
Thank you. Yeah, and these are all small... They're kind of all just small amounts that have added up, it looks like.
Yeah, rather than bog down the agenda, I tend to batch them into larger groups and come to you every, you know, every two or three months when the pile gets, you know, warranted.
Okay. Any questions?
Well, I spoke to Mr. Perry, and he said, "I don't have to be there. Just pay the invoices."
Okay. And I'm sorry, any questions from other council members? My apologies for not asking on the other... On the other... Okay. I would accept the motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Order Number 216. And this is for... To set a public hearing for the allocation of the FY 22 tax levy for December 6th at?
7:30.
7:30. I would accept the motion for that.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. So that's an important public hearing, December 6th at 7:30. And we've made it to the bottom of the pile, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
Excellent. I would accept a motion to adjourn Committee of the Whole. Colonel?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. And motion to adjourn Committee on Finance and Property.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Committee is adjourned. Thank you.
Great. Nice work, Counselor Rand.
Thanks.
Great, nice work, Councilor Rand.
Thanks.
Can I have my public hearing?
Yes. First one.
We are back in session. We have our third public hearing scheduled for eight o'clock, and it's eight o'clock. On order 199, Ms. Kent, could you please read that order?
Order number 199, order that the city council of the City of Beverly hold a public hearing on Monday, November 22nd, 2021 at 8:00 p.m. City Hall, 191 Cabot Street, Beverly, relative to the petition for Mass Electric Company, DBA National Grid for Plan 28322468 Railroad Ab. And this was published in the newspaper on November 12th, 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Kent. Little more work in Ward Two.
Sabita Mahabir, representing National Grid, 44 River Street, Beverly, Massachusetts. This is to provide permanent service to the new building going in at 134146 Rantoul.
Uh, Councilor Rand?
Thank you, I do have some questions. Um, okay, so what, what's the difference between the PVC conduit that's being proposed in this order and, for example, the conduit that was being proposed in the last service?
They are the same conduit, it's just that both of them are concrete encased, it's just the verbiage of the engineer who put it together.
Okay, so they both have PVC?
Yes.
Okay, they're both in PVC and then surrounded by?
Concrete.
Concrete. Okay, got it. And then, uh, let's see, oh, just in the, in the plan that was submitted, I did see the existing conduit in the plan, but then I didn't see a proposed conduit line. Are they the same?
There is an existing conduit going from 131 Rantoul, across the street presently, to just beyond Rantoul Street. This was done prior to Rantoul Street being paved.
Okay.
Uh, they're going to pick it up at that end and bring it into the property.
Okay, so that it's actually going in the existing, on the, in the existing path?
Yes.
Okay, that makes sense, because it didn't look separate on the map. And then, let's see, oh, what is a pad trans? Is that the big box?
Pad mounted transformer, yes. It's a transformer placed on a concrete pad.
Okay, and then, I, I know this isn't necessarily, that's not being approved in this, but I am curious, is that, has that location already been approved as part of that project?
That was part of the planning department, and they went through, it's been like two years in the process.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was already approved and not, this, this wasn't preceding that.
No.
Okay, got it. Thank you. That's everything.
Thank you, Councilor Rand. Uh, anybody else? Council Rotundo, I know you like to help out Councilor Rand with her constituent work. Any questions?
I'm good, thank you for asking, though, I appreciate that.
Any members of the public have any questions or comments? Hearing no further questions or comments, I'll close our public hearing, or further, no. And asks for motion to approve. So moved.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero. Sabithia, thank you.
Um, we, I tried calling you, you had called me about something.
I know, you did, and I didn't get, I got your message, and I needed to call you back, and I ran out of time today. But that situation is under control.
Oh, it is, okay, good.
Yes. And thank you for always being, in case this is our last public hearing, you and I, thank you for always doing a great job and showing up. Appreciate it. And let me butcher your name every time, right? All right, happy Thanksgiving.
You too.
Uh, what do we do next?
Reports.
Reports from committees.
Uh, which, Finance and Property?
She's usually the last.
It is? I go alphabetical.
You do?
Yes. You want me to do it your way?
No, you're the, you're the clerk.
Okay. Order number 208, the Commission on Finance and Property Committee of the Whole, to whom refer the matter of donation for $5,000 from resident Peter Coleman for the senior center.
Uh, questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero.
Order number 209, nope, sorry, order number 211, for Finance and Property Committee of the Whole, to whom refer the matter of the budget transfer of $205,547 to the Fire Department budget to fund costs associated with the recently agreed MOA between City of Beverly and Firefighters Union.
Did you say the public hearing time?
Set a public hearing on December 6th at 7:45 p.m.
Yep. Questions or comments? No, that one's 7:30.
7:30?
Yeah. No, that one's 7:15, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, 7:15, okay, got it.
Questions or comments, other than my own? Hearing none, uh, question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero.
Order number 209, from Finance and Property Committee of the Whole, to whom refer the matter of a grant for $33,000 recycling dividends program through Sustainable Materials Recovering Program from Mass Department of Environmental Protections Bureau of Air and Waste. Have considered and said, beg to report as follows, recommend the council approve the request.
Any questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero.
Order number 212, to whom refer the matter of reappointment Financial Forecast Committee for council appointment Karen Fogarty, 169 East Locup Street, have considered said matter and recommend the council approve the reappointment.
Any questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero. Ms. Fogarty must like going to the dentist also, to volunteer for that committee again. Lot of work. We appreciate it.
Order number two.
She makes a great contribution.
No, she, of course she does, you know her very well, we all do.
Order number 214, to whom refer the matter of approval to pay prior year invoices, recommend the council approve the request.
Any questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero.
Order number 216, the Committee on Finance and Property, to whom refer the matter of the allegation of FY-22 tax levy, has considered said matter and would like to set a public hearing for 12:06, 7:30? I have to.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero. And Councilor Rand did a great, is that the last one, Finance?
Um, no.
Okay, one more. Then I'm going to tell you you did a great job as Chair.
The late file, order number 224, for the 10 turkeys from U.S. Pavement for veterans in need of Thanksgiving Day, recommend that you approve this appointment, I mean this request.
Accept the donation.
Accept the donation, yes, sorry.
We're going to appoint 10 turkeys.
[laughing].
There's nine here.
Well, there's extras, though.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, they're, they're young and fresh. Um, all right. Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, now you can just, I'll still.
Councilor Rand, you did a great job chairing today in Council Flaherty's absence. Council Flaherty is doing well, and he should be back with us on December 6th.
That's good news.
How about legal?
How about legal? Okay. Order number 182, the Committee on Legal Affairs, to whom refer the matter of the appointment of Ms. Megan Jones to serve on the Conservation Commission, recommend the council approve this appointment.
Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero.
Order number 210, to whom was referred the matter of an appointment for a constable, Mr. Hensley Elsie, 7th Lake Street Hyde Park, no, he didn't do anything on this one, did you, Scott?
Pardon?
For the constable, you didn't?
We did, we.
It's the mayor appointment, you have to wait seven days.
Oh, you had to wait seven days. Even on constables?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll wait then.
Yep. Okay, order number 215, to whom refer the matter of the amendment of the ordinance 270-49 Hancock Parking Sign, 9 Floss Terrace, and that is going to be in paper for final pass.
Okay.
Order number 217, to whom refer the matter of the renewal of 2022 Class 1, 2, and 3 motor vehicle licenses, recommend license be granted.
And all, they all submitted the proper paperwork, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero.
Order number 218, to whom was referred the matter of renewal of the 2022 amusement licenses, have considered said matter, recommend the license be granted, and all that paperwork is all turned in as well.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments? Question comes on the acceptance of the proposal and the adoption of the order. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries eight to zero. Is that all we have?
I think so, yep.
Uh, does anybody have anything else to add? Councilor Rand, please, because I bet the over, and it's nine, so if you want to talk for a little.
I don't have that much.
I already paid.
Good. Just that the Ward Two Civic Association meeting is tomorrow night at the library at 6:30, and all are welcome, you don't have to be a member to be there, but you, you can be a member, anyone could be, so.
Sure.
Great.
I have a quick one.
Of course, Councilor Ann.
So, um, at Holcroft Park.
So, um, at Holcroft Park, the residents are putting together a candle lighting, and Mr. Crowley, is that the 2nd of December?
Yes.
December, uh, tree lighting, December 2nd, and we're also, if you can contact me by one week before that, which is coming up seven days before.
Right.
You can text me at 978-295-0050. We're putting together takeaway turkey dinners for people in Gloucester Crossing, um, for, you know, the holidays, so if you want to come by Holcroft Park, I guess it's at 5 o'clock.
Good stuff.
Yeah.
Anyone on the right, Council Flowers?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to mention that the Subcommittee on Public Services has a meeting next Monday at 6:30 to have a public conversation with the mayor and members of the public about dedicated places for pickleball in Beverly.
Good stuff.
So if you want to come talk about where you want to play pickleball. Summer time?
One of my favorite, one of my favorite, um, Beverly residents is a huge pickleball player, Mrs. Goldberg, you know her?
Yes.
My cousin.
Yeah.
You're right, your cousin. She's been on pickleball since it started. She's a world champion.
I've played a few times, and they said I was pretty good.
Oh, that's good, well, you're an athlete.
Well, I think they were just being kind, but.
They wanted their courts.
Just being kind.
Uh, tree lighting on the Common Friday night? Yes. Correct. And then the parade is on Sunday, and we've all been invited to march, I hope everybody will. Um, it's always fun, and I'm sure people are not, not hanging a parade last year, I'm sure people will want to come out and, uh, really have a good time. Uh, the Beverly-Salem Legion team will be on a trolley this year. Will you be riding on the trolley? No, I'm going to walk with you guys. Oh, just figured you might take advantage of the free riding, getting up there and edge. It's all, it's all good, and, um, Al Temkin is amazing, the gentleman that runs the, uh, runs the parade. So hopefully we'll see you all at 1 o'clock on Sunday. That's all we have. All right, our next city council meeting will be Monday, December 6. Hope you can join us, a couple, uh, important public hearings, and I'm sure we'll have some other good stuff. I, uh, thanks for watching, thanks to Kim in the booth, and thank you to Hannah Bowen, um, Steve Crowley, Brendan Sweeney, uh, for being here, starting to get up to speed. Look forward to your inauguration in January. Uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So move.
Second.
All in favor, aye? Aye. Opposed, motion carries eight to zero, we're adjourned.